Good evening and welcome to the January 17, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting. The Reverend Joe Griffith has been kind enough to come and lead us in the invocation and pledge. If you can all stand and remove your hats, please.
I bless the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we're always thankful to humble ourselves before your presence. And certainly, Lord, in this building tonight that has stood through the years and has endured many situations and many circumstances that bring us to this point, that yet there are issues that come before this grand commission. And we just pray that as those who've traveled before them and have had the same experience and same responsibility, that these men and women will also, Father, continue to look to you for guidance, for we know that we expect leadership to come from within ourselves, but true leadership truly comes from you. And so, we ask in all humility that you help us to be humbled in the responsibility that is ours, whatever it may be, that in every walk of our life, we may represent Christ, who surely represented leadership in bringing hope and help and comfort to those who need. We pray now that you would so bless this commission, that this night, there would be harmony in all that is to occur and all that is to be said, and that in all things, Christ would be glorified, for your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Griffith. Our first item this evening is the approval of the agenda. If I may add one agenda item, Kathy Griffith, the DSS Supervisor, needs to speak with the board. I would like to put her under administrative reports and make her A, and move Mr. Woody to B.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're also under old business, removing A?
Yes, removing old business, consideration and action of PB 16-18 Lauren Berry, request to amend the unified development ordinance to establish commercial fishing as an accessory use. Any other changes to the agenda?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
One other change is under board appointments. We need to add planning board appointments. That would be item number two. And under new business, consideration of an ordinance requiring board member compliance with code of ethics, item A.
And where is that, Mr. Chairman?
That's under new business.
Okay. So is it three or 1A?
Any other changes?
I would second that motion again.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed unanimously. Our next item is public comment. We have two folks signed up this evening for public comments. The first would be Rebecca Herring. Rebecca Herring?
She left. She was really in regards to PB 1628.
Thank you. Lauren Berry?
I think she left.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comments. Next item is administrative reports, and if I could please have Kathy Rahm come up, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Rahm. I'm the Director of Social Services here in Currituck County, and I thank you for asking me over tonight to talk with you about a serious matter that has come up. We have sent termination letters to 52 families in child subsidy. We have also notified their childcare providers. This is because we have had unprecedented spending this summer, which did not fall like it normally does through the fall and winter months. It's left us in a position that we have never before been in, and that is to actually have to consider terminating services to families. We've done two things to help mitigate that. We have asked the state for some additional money. I do expect that there will be some. We don't know how much, but we are expecting that within just a few days. We know that they are working on it. We've also asked Smart Start, who serves preschool children only, but we have asked them to see if they have room in their budget to take on some children. We instituted a waiting list back in October and to put the brakes on the spending. We were aware of the high spending, but counted on that attrition that we normally see, but it just did not happen this year. I let Mr. Scanlon know about it. I let the state know, January 6th, I look back at my emails to let them know that this is an action that we would have to take if we did not get additional money. This is, I don't want to minimize the impact to the families. I'm glad that they were able to get some months of childcare, but I don't want to minimize that this is really serious for these families. And we certainly hope that we will be able to maybe save 15 to 20 of these children's placements, but we definitely, outside of about $120,000, we will not be able to keep them all on. Those children who've gone on the waiting list, starting with their request in October, it will be a very long time before we will be able to serve them, because we have a priority list of how we terminate, and then those families are first on when funding becomes available. So, we will work through every single one of the families that we have to terminate first before anyone else goes on, and that will take quite a while. If you have questions, if you get calls, please don't hesitate to call me. I am working part-time at the moment, so I'm not in the office all the time, but you can get my cellphone number. My front desk will give it to you, and I will be glad to talk with you from home. Do you have any questions this evening?
I don't believe anyone has any questions. Thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
Next item is the Land Use Plan Progress Report. Ben Woody is going to give a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to give the Board of Commissioners an update on the land use plan process tonight. Many of the commissioners have seen this information in parks previously, so for you, it will be a second time hearing some of these numbers and stats, perhaps a third or fourth time, but for the public at home, this is a lot of those folks, their first opportunity to see an update of where the land use plan is and what we've done to this point and what we're doing to move forward. So, hopefully, the public will find this to be an informal presentation, and additionally, we will probably post this on the land use plan's website, so they can see video of this presentation to keep folks up to date. So I'm going to jump right in. As the board knows, the land use plan is one of the most important things from a planning and zoning standpoint that county governments do. It helps county prioritize land development policies. It can even be a tool to help set capital improvement plans for the counties. It organizes the way we approach growth and development, everything from home-based businesses to major economic expansions. What I'm going to do tonight is tell you why, while we're doing a land use plan, that's only one slide, so that'll be brief, kind of go through the process that we're using for this update of the plan, some data, some stats that are kind of underpinning what we're doing, some of the survey results that are interesting, that I think you should be aware of as well as the public, and then what's next in the process. This land use plan we're updating, we're calling it Imagine Currituck, so we're trying to engage people to tell us what they want to see in the future of this county. We do land use plans because we're required to by the state. The Coastal Area Management Act requires that coastal counties do land use plans, but while we really do land use plans in Currituck is because it makes a lot of sense and it's a good way to run your government and plan for the future. So, Currituck County has a long, rich history of land use planning. The county did some of its first land use planning back in the late 60s, which was very advanced for the time. I still think we have an advanced planning program and good leadership from our elected bodies. So what we're trying to do with this land use plan update, Imagine Currituck, is prepare for the population growth we're going to see, for shifting demographics that we see ahead, and then for the constant development pressure that you know all too well, we face every meeting. Planning's a challenging topic in Currituck County. That's because we have a place that people want to live and they want to be, so that makes it difficult at times, but it's a good problem to have. There are counties in this area of the state that may do one subdivision a year. You'll do one or two a month, so there's a lot of challenges working here in Currituck County, and that's why this plan is such an important process. And what we're going to do is create a vision for the county for the next 10 to 20 years, and we're going to establish priorities for what we want to do and how we want to get We started this almost a year ago, so it's hard to believe, but we've been at this about a year. Back in March of 2016, we started assembling a steering committee. We have a 12 or 13-member steering committee that's comprised of citizens from the different geographies of the county. They have different backgrounds. They have business backgrounds. Some are just civic leaders, so there's a variety of people on that committee. They help us work through this process. They're kind of our community voice, so to speak, as we go through the land use plan. We spent most of the latter part of last year engaging the public. We had tremendous input from the public, in my opinion. I'll go through those numbers in a second. And we're getting to the hard part now, which is actually writing a plan. So, I'm going to kind of capture what we've done in terms of public engagement and visioning and kind of the data we've found out, and the next time I come back before you, we'll probably have some policies and some direction written for the plan itself. So, I'm going to go through these really quickly. You've seen these commissioners several times, but I think it's important for the public to know. We anticipate about 11,000 people are going to be added to our population in the next 20 years. It doesn't sound like a lot in and of itself until you think that's a 42% population increase for Currituck County, so that means all the services that you provide as a board, you've got to anticipate you're going to need to provide those services for an additional 11,000 people. That's everything from social services to libraries to law enforcement to even planning. Most of that population, I will tell you, is going to be in the Moayak area, in the northern mainland. That tends to be where probably about 70% of that population is going to occur. That's our high-growth area. Another thing that you don't see on here is seasonal population. On the beach side of things, you can probably expect your seasonal population to grow by about 20,000 people. So again, instead of having 45,000 people in the summer, you're going to have 65,000 people on the beaches in the summer, something to keep in mind. Over the next 20 years, we're seeing our largest increases in our senior population. A lot of people are aging into that demographic, but, and to give some context, our student population is going to increase by about 1,200 new students in the next 20 years. We're going to have about 4,200 new seniors in the next 20 years. So that's something that we want to kind of pay attention to as we think about services in the future and how we're going to orient ourselves in the next 20 years. Again, you can see the different age groups. What you see is the seniors are a fast-growing age group. We also have some growth in the 20 to 34 age group. I would say a lot of that, the second fastest age group that's going to grow is 20 to 34, but I would say a lot of that probably is closer to the 34 side of that spectrum. We tend to get families that move here in their late 20s, early 30s. Housing stock, we're about 2/3, year-round housing about 1/3, seasonal housing, of course, most of the, almost all the seasonal housing is on the Outer Banks area. To accommodate all these people, these 11,000 folks that are going to be permanent residents, you'll need to add, the county will need to add about 4,100 new houses. So again, when you think about subdivision, the community thinks about growth, it's important to recognize that in the next 20 years, we're probably going to add about 4,000 houses. Building permit data backs that up, so it's not a matter of can you stop it from coming? It's more a matter of what are you going to do with it when it does come? That's about 207 new houses per year. We actually trend a little higher than that right now. Of that 207, one thing that's interesting is in Currituck County, most of our homeowners are not cost burden. If you spend more than 30% of your income on housing, you're considered cost burden. So we're on par with the rest of the state in terms of that, but for our renters, about 60% of the renters in Currituck County are a cost burden, which means most of our renters are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, which can be a problem for young workers or for people that are trying to get into the workforce, who don't have the income yet to afford high housing costs. Our housing mix is 85% single-family, 12 or 13% manufactured homes, and 2% multifamily. So we're very heavily oriented towards single-family type dwellings. 80% of our workforce commutes out of the county. 20 go to Dare. 40 go to other North Carolina counties, and 41% go to Virginia. Obviously, that means you have a lot of retail sales leakage that goes out of the county when they do their typical daily shopping in other counties and states. That's the data that underpins a lot of the information on the land use plan, what we're using as a focus or how to move forward. Public engagement, we've done a lot of that to this point. Once we write a draft of the plan and the policies, there'll be another round of public engagement, so everything we do will take back to the public. But we've been able to engage our public through steering committee meetings, focus groups, public workshops. We've used a lot of digital resources that the county traditionally hasn't used for planning efforts in the past. We've used the website, social media. We've made videos to support this. We have interactive maps and interactive surveys, so we've tried to get out and reach people on their phones or their devices, instead of having them come to meetings all the time. We did do meetings, though, and as you can see, we did 15 focus group meetings, seven public workshops. That's 22 meetings, including weekends, just after holidays, nights, and we had staff attended every one of those meetings, so we had a lot of night meetings for this process, but we had pretty good attendance. You can see on the map, the green markers are meetings we had, focus group meetings, a focus group being like the Chamber of Commerce or some more specified group of people to have a conversation about the land use plan. Then we had seven public workshops that were spread throughout the county. So you can see, when you look at the meetings, we were pretty, spread out pretty well in terms of our geographic diversity. For the focus groups, we tended to go to groups that wanted to have us, but we did get all, I think we covered, did a good job of covering all the areas of the county and having these meetings. In the focus groups, we had 237 in-person participants at those meetings. We also did a digital campaign to try to get people who didn't want to come to a meeting, which seems to be more and more the case. It's hard to get people out to meetings at night. Had a website, video, interactive map, social media. Key fact of that is through our digital outreach, we reached 28,000 people. That means we touched 28,000 people who saw something about this land use plan, or maybe it popped up in a Facebook feed, whatever it was. And this is what's interesting about the way we interact in the future. The county spent a total of $860 on social media advertising, so to me, that's a very, very small price to get that kind of reach through social media. We had 130 interactive map responses, and we had almost 1,800 survey responses, so that's a tremendous response to a survey. And the survey was the main thing that we tried to push through the social media platforms to our constituents. On the mapping exercise, you can see some of the things that came out of that. The blue and the green are things that people wanted to see or liked through the mapping exercise. You see the bridge comment, obviously, right in the middle there, but sidewalks, bike paths, public access to the water, parks, commercial development, small retail, and then of course, some of the things that came up as barriers were flooding, solar farms, traffic, overdevelopment, sea level rise, even the water park came up as a barrier. So you see there's some surprises, but not necessarily a lot of surprises in the mapping exercise. But I want to talk about the survey for a minute, because if you remember, we had 18, almost 1,800 responses to our survey, and it's those survey responses that we, the staff and the steering committee will then use to start to lay out this plan. Some of the policies and things we want to accomplish, we want to base on responses from the survey. The survey was about 30 questions, so it was a pretty long survey. You could take 10 and you could opt out, or you could take the additional 20 or so at the lure of winning a gift basket potentially. So we actually had a pretty good response, and most people took the full survey, and we organized, what I'm going to show you now, I'm going to pull out seven or eight, maybe nine, survey questions organized around the plan elements. When we build this plan, it's going to focus on land use, economic development, infrastructure, county services, transportation, environment, parks and rec, and sense of place. So we're trying to make this plan a little more robust than the last plan. Our last land use plan really just focused on land use and the environment, so we're trying to add other elements of county government to this plan to have a more cohesive approach to what the county does and how it interacts with people. So let's learn a little bit about the survey. So we had about 60% of our responses were people that lived here and owned property. About 35% were non-resident property owners, so that's a good thing. That means we actually got people that, and most of those were property owners on the beach, so we got a lot of our out-of-state property owners to engage in the survey, which is good, because that's a good voice we don't always get a chance to hear, particularly through public meetings. And of course, we had some renters also that participated in the survey. Strong response from northern mainland and Corolla. That's to be expected. Those are oftentimes the areas that have a lot of growth challenges, so it makes sense that you would have a lot of survey interest from there. That was followed by Lower Currituck, the off-road area, and finally, Knott's Island and Gibbs Woods. And that's total number of surveys submitted percentage-wise.
You know, Ben, you mentioned that 35% were, right, non-resident owners. Now go back to that same slide. So, they don't, they're not reflected in that, is I guess the point, right?
They are. The 35% non-resident owners would be in this, and obviously, most of those are going to, that 34% in Corolla probably is the vast majority of non-resident property owners.
Okay, so, that's not where do you live, where do you own property, would be a better way of stating that question.
Where you own property, yes, that's correct. This pie chart here is where do you own property, not where you live.
Right.
Correct.
But where do you live?
This is where you live, correct.
Not necessarily where you own property. Okay, so let me go back to this.
Okay.
No?
Okay, that's 35%.
Yeah. So 35% of the respondents do not live in Currituck.
Correct.
Now forward a slide. That are not reflected in any of those colors.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Correct. That is correct. Yes, I'm sorry. You're correct.
So what I'm asking is, the 35% of non-resident property owners, are they in that?
They are not.
Got it.
You're correct. Okay, that is, I'm sorry, you're correct. This does not include the people that, these are people that live in the county that participated. I'm going to go through these really quickly, because I don't want to, I don't want to, but a couple important elements that you should, I think, take away the board should and the community from this survey. Some of our top priorities as we grow: protect natural resources, attract new businesses, expand water and sewer. No real surprises there. What's important, what do people consider to be? We hear rural character a lot, and we're still trying to figure out what rural character is exactly, but the, because it's very subjective, but the elements of what I think primarily the main elements are wildlife habitat, hunting, farms and pastures, and woodlands. What types of housing should be encouraged? No surprise, the number one response was large lots, single family. What did surprise me a little bit was the second, the second highest response was retirement communities with condos, which tells me that some of the seniors that were taken, the older folks, or people that want to be old in Currituck County, are starting to think that maybe some alternate forms of housing may not be a bad thing, but you notice that's kind of caveated with residential retirement communities. The third largest response was actually mixed residential developments, which again would be the idea, if you had any kind of different housing, it's mixed in with a subdivision that has also traditional housing types. So what I read from that is, if we are going to try different types of housing in this county, it's probably going to need to be integrated into other types of development or things that are more geared towards retirement-age folks.
Ben, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Isn't it currently right now where the county's position is when it comes to large lots? We kind of try to direct people away from that, such as 10-acre lots, et cetera?
We generally do, because, that's correct, and I'll give the context. If you're going to build 4,000 new houses, and each lot is, say, three acres, then that's 12,000 acres of land that needs to be used for houses, not to include the roads and open space. So generally, large lots aren't the most efficient way to grow as a community in terms of providing county services, but people do like large lots on surveys and things.
Ben, one caveat to that would not be, rooftops would help. We've heard a lot of people talk about wanting Taco Bell, or whatever Domino's, or another grocery store in Moayak for instance, so if we go to large lots, that's one caveat, is it not? Staying away from those or having some good mix of high-density mixed residential use would be more optimal to bring in those other services or businesses.
Yeah, businesses want rooftops, but they also want rooftops that are concentrated in the area within the influence of the business, so a rooftop that's two miles away from the business isn't as valuable as one that's a quarter of a mile away from the business. So yeah, but, so yes, it's a difficult issue.
And then also, you said about 4,100 homes need to be built in the next 20 years. Right now, we have, what, over 3,000 buildable lots today that are already approved?
In some areas, some, interesting, in Lower, the majority of those are probably in Lower Currituck. Majority of the demand for new houses, though, is going to be in the northern mainland, where there's far, far much less inventory of vacant lots. So you're right, there are a lot of vacant lots, but they don't necessarily match where the demand, the supply doesn't match the demand from a geographical perspective.
Ben, I got one quick question. On these items, can you just, can you determine where most of the respondents came from?
I can. I can, we can determine what, we have all these, on the website, we have all these answers broken, these are county-wide, but we have every answer broken down by geography. We can even break it down by the age of the person in the geography.
The reason why I was asking you, because as far as the retirement community aspect of it, Lower Currituck had one, what, about 15, was it 15 years ago? Then it went bankrupt? So, okay, yeah, and I didn't know if a majority of that came from the northern end or the southern end, because I think one was tried, but...
Yeah, that was spread around, but what we have on our website, or we will have following this meeting, is we'll have the survey results for this, all questions by the county, but we'll also post a set of survey, complete survey results for each geography of the county. So if you're in Lower Currituck, you'll be able to go and look at these exact questions just by your geography, and that should be up by the end of the week on the county's website. Good point, though. And I'll say, just because people want it, doesn't always mean it works or it's realistic either. This is, we're just kind of setting a vision or trying to set priorities. Now, the next part is kind of sorting through it and trying to decide what's realistic and what's not, and then what, how can the county government, if it can, facilitate any of these things? Counties' economic development priorities, infrastructure investment, natural resource-based tourism, and attracting new businesses through a high quality of life. There's other things in there, but I'm just kind of hitting the top, the top vote-getter, so those are the things that people, you know, thought were important for economic development. What are the greatest environmental threats? Number one was actually development, which was kind of interesting. Number two was severe storms, and number three was beach erosion. And what I found interesting on this was actually flooding ended up being fourth on the list, and we hear a lot of that in meetings, but what kind of bubbled up is the biggest environmental threat at least, is development storms and beach erosion. Well, I guess you could argue flooding is more of a threat to development than it is the environment. How should the mainland grow? This is interesting, this is, the yellow bar is how people from the off-road area answered. The teal bar in the middle is how people from Corolla answered the question, and the bottom gray bar is how people from the mainland answered the question. So what you're looking at is how do people, for example, in the off-road area, think the mainland should grow, and et cetera, et cetera. Number one was for the mainland was protect rural character, focused development in full-service areas, and number three was focused development to... areas, and number three was focused development to create complete communities. And that was the, that was the order of all three geographies for the mainland. How should the off-road area grow? This actually, this, the areas answered this a little bit differently, based on where you were at. Everybody agreed that little, that a limit residential and a strict commercial was the number-one priority for the off-road area. After that, the off-road residents thought their number-two priority was institution of a permit system to control growth. And then the third, that all, everybody agreed on, was purchase land for conservation. So you had a little bit of a difference opinion from the mainland and Corolla than the off-road area, but generally, it's limit, limit residential and commercial, purchase land for conservation, and the permit system just got more votes from the off-road area community than it did from the mainland and Corolla. How should Corolla grow, finally? And these all lined up as well. Limit size and density of residential, limit size of vacation homes, and protect natural resources were the three top vote-getters. So what's next? Now that we've got, we've had all these focus group meetings and the community meetings, we've had all this survey information that's available on the website. The next thing that the staff and the steering committee will start to do is develop policies and recommendations for each of those plan elements, I read to you earlier. We're going to do that in a manner reflecting the public input as best we can. Like, sometimes the public input isn't always, you can't always achieve it, but you want to try to do that. So we're going to try to put together recommendations on each of these topic areas, using the public input as a guide, and also using a data-driven process. At some point, you've got to look at the demographics and just kind of the constraints of the land and what's really realistic in terms of growth and development. So we're going to try to put together those recommendations. Once there's a draft of that direction that's put together, it will go back out to the public for a robust series of public meetings and another survey, and try to make sure that the public agrees that we're on track with this. And that will probably be the next time the Board of Commissioners will need to check in on this process as well, to make sure it reflects your values. If you need more information on this process, we'd love to have a conversation with you. The staff will meet with anybody at your convenience as much as we can. We're very, we want this to be transparent and accessible. Currituck Land Use Plan has all the meeting information on it, all the survey results, and any other technical documents we've used. All that is included on that website. If you want to attend a meeting of the steering committee, anybody from the public's welcome to do that. The meeting schedule is posted. You can email me directly. I'll answer any question as best I can that you send me, or you can call the planning department at that number. If you contact us, we would love to hear from you and include you in this process. And I can answer any question the boards has at this time.
Ben, I've got one. It's kind of, following what we met earlier in Corolla this week, since we're, the conservation easement stuff we talked about earlier this week. One question I came out with was respect to zoning. So if you have a conservation medium on your property, which most of the soundfront property or waterfront property is, and it's zoned one way, you're good for development, how it was originally zoned?
Correct.
If somebody wants to come in and change the zoning, how does that affect them? So if they were...
If they want to change the land use plan designation?
Yeah.
Let me give some context for the public, too. So the land use plan is a policy guide, so it's just, it's just a concept of where you want to be in twenty years. There are designations, there's some land that's more suitable for conservation versus maybe more intense development. The land use plan tries to anticipate that, but it's just a policy document. At the end, when you're ready to develop your property, what truly matters is the zoning of your property. So whatever your property is zoned will dictate the uses you're allowed to do on your property. Now, if you come to the county and try to rezon your property, we're generally going to view that rezoning in the context of the land use plan, which is a consistency statement that you make as the Board of Commissioners. If, on the previous land use plan, answer your question, Commissioner White, if on the 2006 land use plan you disagree with any classification that applied to your property, then you need to contact me at one of these contact informations to bring us information as to why you think that's incorrect. And the staff and the committee will consider that. So if we're off-base on any topic, a policy or a map, if you come to us, we'll have a conversation, and we can, I think, at least explain how we came to the conclusion we came to, and you may have information that helps us make a better decision. And we're open to that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any further questions? If I can, Mr. Woody, I know that you and your staff have spent a lot of time on this and a lot of effort, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the board and the citizens of Currituck. We really appreciate the effort, the long nights, the weekends. We know you have a long way to go, but to this point, a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to thank the steering committee, a group of citizens that are also putting a lot of effort into this as well. They deserve recognition. So thank you for your comments, and I'll pass that along to them.
Please do. Thank you. Our next item is public hearing in action on PB 14-16, Lakeview at Currituck. Request to amend the use permit to modify the sidewalk/trail setback for Lakeview at Currituck. The property is owned by Lakeview Land Development LLC and located in Moayak on Survey Road. Tax map fifteen, parcel eighty-three A, eighty-three B, eighty-three C, eighty-three D, and eighty-three E, Moayak Township. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Woody.
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, you had a request before you to amend the use permit for the Lakeview subdivision to allow a sidewalk to encroach into the ten-foot setback. The use permit had a condition that said the sidewalk must be located ten feet from a adjoining property line. There are portions of the sidewalk that were built within between seven and ten feet. The current ordinance, so the board knows, actually does allow that type of encroachment, so the sidewalk would meet our current UDO. However, it would not meet the condition of the use permit. At your last meeting, you asked Mr. Bissell, on behalf of the applicant, to make contact with you adjoining property owners to see what position they may have on this encroachment. And at this point, I can turn it over to Mrs. Bissell to give the board the answer requested.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also put a, what I think is a better map than what you had last time in your package. It was just shown on the screen here that I think helps to get a better picture, visual of the photograph as well. So I just wanted to kind of run through those quickly. You see the area behind lots eight, nine, and ten, that's the area that backs up to the golf course. It's actually the golf course rough area. The area up to lot seven and part of lot eight backs up to what is actually Eagle Creek open space that is between their entrance road and the property line. It's a wooded area. This is a view of the sidewalk as you are looking north on Survey Road, on the Eagle Creek side of the subdivision entrance. This has been turning into the subdivision. And then this is the part of the walkway that runs along and roughly parallel to the Eagle Creek property line. This part of it is actually compliant with the setback. This is about fifteen feet away. As you move farther to the south, this would be the area along the Eagle Creek open space. Some of it's ten feet off, some of it's eight or nine feet off. Then we're moving farther to the south, and you can actually see where the contractor kind of made a couple of wobbles in that walk. What we think, and when I walked this with Fred Whitman the other day, it actually appears that he was running it along the ditch, because the ditch kind of wobbles a little bit, which may help explain how it got this way. This is a view from the walkway to the Eagle Creek Community Open Space property. And another one, you can actually see the entrance road in the back. And then this is a view from the walkway farther south to the golf course property. And then finally, this is the southern end of it where it turns back to the property, and you can see the golf course on the left and the nearest Eagle Creek houses a couple hundred feet away. So there are really just three other things I'd like to say. First is that staff would actually be able to approve this, except for the condition in the use permit, which mentions a specific number. If the, if the use permit had simply said comply with the UDO, then this board wouldn't have to rule on this issue, because since it does actually comply with the UDO. Secondly, the, it backs up to open space, and as you saw in the photographs, and the property owners have no objection to it. I'm going to put something into the record here. This is an email from Tim Posh, who is the owner of Eagle Creek Golf Club. I agree to the walkway. The walkway is fine with me where it is. Tim Posh, owner of Eagle Creek Golf Club. I'll put that into the record. I met with Fred Whitman, representing the Eagle Creek Homeowners Association. He indicated that, actually, he indicated he was going to come to the meeting and tell you that he didn't have an objection, but I understand instead he actually emailed the county today to indicate that he had no objection. And so it's, has no impact really on the adjacent properties, and they don't have a problem with it. And then third, you know, we understand, which was mentioned last time, the board's reluctance to authorize plan deviations. But on the other hand, the project as constructed meets the requirements of the UDO. So I don't think that you're going to necessarily be setting a precedent, and that it's going to cause trouble for the county down the road, since this does actually meet the county's rules. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bissell. With no other testimony, I'll open the public hearing. The only one I have signed up for the public hearing is Mr. Bissell.
I only signed up to make sure that I got to be heard.
Okay. So you've said enough, right?
I've said enough.
Fair enough.
Said my piece.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? With that, I will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion from the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm speaking with Mr. Bissell, Mr. Whitman, and the Eagle Creek Homeowners Association, and Mr. Posh, owner of Golf Course. They have no problems with any of the part, the seven-ten-foot sidewalk pushback, against the current UDO. With that, these are not injured public health safety. The walkway is eighty-eight five, adjacent to the current UDO. These are not injured public health safety. These will not injure value or joining or buddy lands or harmony with the area which is located. The adjacent apartments are armen, town areas, and all courses. Lot areas that have existing vegetation, lumber, you amend with not injured value of adjacent property, but it will be in harmony.
With existing land uses, the use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other official adopted plans. The land use plan classifies the area as rural, but adjacent to full service within the Moayak subarea. The Moayak subarea plan classifies the area as full service. The proposed development density is 2.37 units per acre, which is within range of densities envisioned in the Moayak small area plan. The following land use plan and Moayak small area plan policies are relevant and support this request. Using the 2006 land use plan policy PR4, the county shall seek to identify plans and develop a system of open space greenways, hiking, and biking trails, as opportunities may allow. The use of the natural corridors such as streams, flood plans, man-made corridors such as utility and transportation right-of-ways and easements shall be emphasized. Under the MSAP policy R1, expand and develop recreational opportunities for all ages and uses, including access to the water and natural environment, walking trails, multi-use purpose fields, multi-purpose community buildings, and other non-traditional types of recreational opportunities that are consistent with the Currituck County Parks and Rec Mass Plan. And last but not least, the use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including not, but limited to schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. State standards and guidelines shall be followed for determining when public facilities are adequate, and the last, the change will not have any impact on the county's ability to provide these services. I move to approve.
Can I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Our next item is new business, and that would be an ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending Chapter Two, Article Three, Division One of the Code of Ordinance to provide for county authority, board or commission member compliance with Chapter Two, Article Two, Division Three Code of Ethics. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight is a proposed ordinance that will amend the, amend Chapter Two of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to provide specifically for expectations of persons that you appoint to your county boards, authorities, and commissions. It is previously determined by this board that while it would be assumed that there would be a certain expectation of those who are appointed to serve on your boards, authorities, or commissions, that perhaps there was not an explicit statement of what that minimal expectation might be. And I would denote that even with the adoption of this ordinance, it would be a minimal expectation. Certainly, someone might be expected to go above and beyond that, which might be required or expected of them by adoption of this ordinance. Therefore, it was suggested that the ordinance be amended so that members of your boards, authorities, and commissions would also be expected to, at a minimum, comply with the same codes of ethics that the Board of Commissioners has some, had many years ago adopted for itself. And so what this ordinance will do is create a new Section 2-101 entitled Code of Ethics that will provide that all members of a county authority, board, or commission are subject to and must abide by the standard of conduct provided under Chapter Two, Article Two, Division Three of this code, which is the Code of Ethics that county commissioners are expected to comply with. I think this would then meet your, or the board's previous requests. That language would be added to the ordinance to give this expectation a floor that board members would understand that they are, at a minimum, expected to meet as they serve Currituck County. I want to note that when an ordinance is before you for adoption at its first reading, it is necessary that it receive a unanimous vote. If it does not, thereafter, it must come back to you for a second reading, at which time it may be adopted by a simple majority. Because Commissioner Gilbert is not present tonight, you may take a vote tonight, but understand that it will still require that it come back to you at your next meeting, at which time it may be adopted finally by a simple majority vote.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. I would open the floor for a motion.
So moved. I move for approval of the ordinance change.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion does not pass. We will bring it at the next board meeting.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As a, assuming we get passed an approval at the next meeting, as a means of communication, et cetera, et cetera, I don't think it is, I mean, it's all fine that we expect every member of our boards to become familiar with this general, or the statute. The reality is, as part of their indoctrination or introduction, they need to be provided a copy of that so that they, in fact, see what this refers to.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont. Our next item is nomination of commissioners to advisory boards.
Mr. Chairman, based on the written language that we have here, we're Commissioner Beaumont, Commissioner Etheridge, Commissioner Gilbert, myself, Commissioner Hanning, Commissioner Payman, Commissioner White. We have come up with a list of potentials with one or two modifications. I can read them into the record if you'd like.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beaumont, Admiral Rural Planning Organization, also known as the RPO, Fire and EMS Board, Advisory Board, also known as FIAB, Recreation Advisory Board.
If I could interrupt, that it's no longer Fire and EMS. That board's name was changed under the reward following our consultant. It's the Fire Advisory Board, not the FIAB anymore.
Okay, the FAB.
FAB Five.
That's it. Okay. Also, not being read as the Fire Advisory Board, known as FAB, or FAB Five. or FAB 5. Commissioner Etheridge, Social Services Board, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Commissioner Gilbert, the Almirall Commission, the Animal Services and Control Advisory. Commissioner Hall, the COE Board of Trustees, and the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Commissioner Haney, Almiral Regional Solid Waste Authority, Trillium Health. Commissioner Payment, the ABC Board, the Almiral Rural Planning Organization Alternate, and the Almiral Regional Health Board. Commissioner White, the Tourism Advisory Board, and the Economic Development Board. One board has not been filled at this time. The Historic Boat and Building Advisory to be determined. I make a motion we approve as read.
Do we need to approve each one individually or all together?
I think you can approve the slate.
Okay, thank you.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
We're supposed to have comments after.
I'm sorry. Any comments? I apologize. Got ahead of myself.
In my mistaken, that, was there a few more that Marion Gilbert had that she made comments that were listed on here that should have been on here, or am I mis, is that incorrect?
She commented that she is on a board. I think we're looking at to see if she's on there because she's appointed by this board of commissioners, or if she serves in the capacity because she's on the Almiral Commission. But it's the Workforce Development Board.
Okay, that's what I was, okay. So there might be another one that, okay, we need to verify that?
Yes.
Okay.
Apologize. Thank you, Mr. Payment. Next item is planning board adjustments, planning Mr. Beaumont?
Sir?
Did you have an appointment you wanted to?
Yes, I did.
Shay Balance?
Right. And I'd like to nominate Shay Balance to fill the position on the planning board.
A little bit of background on Mr. Balance. He's currently serving on the Board of Adjustments. Has been doing a good job there. Wants to go on to the planning board. Wants to contribute a little bit more. So with that, I'll look for a second. A second.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kason called me and said he did not wish to serve anymore on the Economic Development Board. So I'd like to put forward Jeff O'Brien to fill that position. He's been a businessman in Corolla for, since the 70s sometime, I guess. He's a contractor there and has owned some other businesses. So I'd like to put him forward.
That would be a good choice. I know Jeff well.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I can't see, I can't see that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we need to clarify, Commissioner White, I think he mentioned Economic Development Board. Mr. Kason's actually on the planning board, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Mr. O'Brien would serve on the planning board?
That is incorrect. He wanted to be on Economic Development, I believe.
Okay.
So I guess I need to follow up on that and make sure I'm on the right one. I think I got a couple emails, so.
Do we need to strike that motion?
For the time being, you might want to.
Well, I think we need to make a motion to do the opposite. So it'd be proper to entertain a motion to remove Mr. O'Brien from the Economic Development Board.
Shortest lived tenure ever.
Well, he wants to be on Economic Development.
It's got to be unanimous.
All right, well, so.
Unless there's a seat available.
I think we're talking about the right board, right seat. And I've just been looking at so many things. It's kind of filtered through. So I guess for now, I'll make a motion to remove Mr. O'Brien from the Economic Development Board until such time as we can establish that's the right board.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Payment, did you have a recommendation?
Sorry. I can't see it, Mike.
Did you have a recommendation to replace John Cooper at this time?
Not at this time.
Not this time. And, Mr. Beaumont, do you have a recommendation?
You're good.
You're good, then. Okay.
We also have consensus.
And then we have a consensus for Robert Bell from the mainland.
I'm sorry.
For the planning board.
Is it Bobby Bell?
Robert Bell.
Robert Bell.
There would be consensus, so it would be, does anybody have somebody in mind?
Okay, we'll table that for now. Any other appointments? Next item is the consent agenda. Move for motion to approve.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously. The next item would be the commissioner's report. Start with Mr. Beaumont.
Nothing this evening.
Ms. Etheridge?
Nothing.
Mr. White?
Just had something I wanted to read. It's not really, so I don't know how many of you actually took the time to read through the State House Committee on Strategic Transportation Planning, but I found this interesting. North Carolina has significant infrastructure needs and insufficient revenue to meet those needs. North Carolina's population is expected to grow by 2.5 million citizens by 2040. I bring it up tonight because we're talking about planning. I think it's just an interesting thing to go with it. With additional revenue, road, and rail congestion, obviously, we're going to run into some problems. A couple highlight notes in there. I-87, which we've talked about a lot lately, is estimated to cost $1.3 billion. And $100 million for I-587. To greet, to create optimal conditions, an additional $89 billion over the next 30 years is required to bring the roads up to what would be optimal, which I've never seen a state actually get roads optimal. I don't care where you're at, just, but anyway. So one of the problems that the state has found is that motor fuel tax revenues generate 55% of transportation revenues. But with a combination of increased fuel efficiency standards and the use of alternative fuel vehicles, motor fuel tax revenue will decline. Other states are shifting their reliance on motor fuel tax revenue by implementing and dedicating state sales tax and sales tax on motor fuel sold at the pump, which we all pay currently. And vehicle miles traveled based on tax, basically tax on vehicle miles traveled and increased registration fees for alternative fuel vehicles. So in a nutshell, I guess the state's going to look at, we're going to pay more for gas taxes and possibly property tax for the vehicles. And if you buy a highly efficient vehicle, you're going to, they're going to have to find a way to pay for this stuff. So more taxes, but I thought it was interesting nonetheless that these are things that are going to impact us, that are going to be real to us, especially me, because of the amount of fuel that I buy for my business.
Right. I think everyone in the county drives an excessive amount compared to most communities. Commissioner Payment?
Just one concern. I've received some phone calls, and I'm going to just ask the county manager to, if he could look into this for me and just get a report on the road conditions. I know, especially in the south end, the, and especially I, the Republic Branch Road, I mean, the conditions and the potholes are starting to pick up. And I know a lot of the salt and the storms. And I was just, they're being asked if there's any update on when they're planning on or what their next projects might be for resurfacing in what areas.
Thank you, Mr. Payment. I have nothing. With that, I will recess the, I'm sorry, Mr. Hall. Apologies. County manager's report?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I will recess the meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open a special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board to discuss budget amendments, and hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, you've got three budget amendments in front of the Ocean Sands Water District Board in your package. The first one is, there is a unique relationship between the Southern Outer Banks Water System and the Ocean Sands Community Water System. The Southern Outer Banks actually sells water to them, which they in turn deliver to the customers in Ocean Sands. Now that the audit has been completed, the Southern Outer Banks Water System sold more water to Ocean Sands than what was budgeted. So what you're having, or what was anticipated. And so the first budget amendment is to increase the budget in Ocean Sands to pay for the additional water that they had purchased through the year from the Southern Outer Banks Water System. The second budget amendment you have is the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District is currently in litigation. We need to increase the legal fees to represent that district, and you have a budget amendment for that. The third one is, we have just about completed, or in fact, have completed, the first phase in the upgrade replacement of the wastewater plant. The advisory board had made a recommendation a couple of years ago to the Board of Commissioners to do two things, to raise their water rates and to assess, I believe, a five cent tax to generate money to offset the cost of doing phases one, two, and three. Now that the audit is being completed, what you're seeing in that budget amendment is the authorization to move last year's amount that was collected under those two fees out of the operation and over to a construction fund to support the Phase 2 and Phase 3. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about those.
Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Scanlon, in the first budget amendment, the credit card processing, is that how much we have to pay if people use their credit card to pay for their utilities?
Any further questions?
So we don't add a, add-on charge for that? We absorb that?
Is part of your user agreement with the vendor, you're prohibited from adding on, yeah, it's part of the user agreement you have with whoever your credit card processor is.
Which is, that's the way industry, that's.
Not anymore. Not anymore. I actually have a credit card fee. And as long as you state what your fee is, you can charge that fee now. And you've seen it at gas stations, they have a cash price and a credit card price. And that came out of litigation because gas stations started doing that because of the exorbitant credit card fees. So I actually do that in my business as a regular course of business. We actually charge a $1 surcharge fee for using a credit card. And there's actually a credit card company out there now called Jet Pay or Blue Pay. And if you swipe, they actually bill the customer on the back end a percentage based on what it's going to cost. So it doesn't cost you a dime to operate. Yeah. So just something to consider.
We certainly look at that during the budget process.
Take that.
Any further discussion? With that, I'll open the floor for a motion to approve budget amendments.
So moved.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. With that, I will close the special meeting of the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District Board and open the special meeting of the travel tourism, travel of the Tourism Development Authority. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, you have one budget amendment tonight for the TDA's consideration. There's actually two pieces to it. One is to increase the telephone and postage for the budget, $480. And another is, we had to undertake a vehicle, an unanticipated vehicle repair. And so we're asking move to money from general maintenance to vehicle repairs of $1,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? I will entertain a motion.
You have a good prayer?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. With that, I will close the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority and reopen the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and move to closed session, make a motion to move to closed session at this time pursuant to GS 143-318.11A6 to discuss personnel matters.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.